Now be recorded.
Okay, we're also live.
Okay. Now, just, uh, kitty, timing is great. Welcome, everyone. This is the joint work session with the Lincoln County Board Commissioners and the City of Walport City Councilors, Monday, June 7th, and it's now high thirty-two. Introductions is always a challenge here, so maybe what I'll do is introduce the commissioners and they can wave, and then I'll let the mayor introduce the city councilors. If that's agreeable to you, Mr. Mayor?
Sure, no problem.
All right. We have all three commissioners present. Commissioner Claire Hall is here. I don't think her cameras turned on. Or, and we missing Claire? Oh, Claire, excuse me. I am behind the times here. Claire will not be able to join us this evening. She was at the board commissioners meeting, but is not able to be here tonight. The CL I see on my camera, I'm sure is the sheriff. And, uh, let's see. So, but Commissioner Jacobson is here, so we do have a quorum of the commissioners. And now I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Mayor. I'll see if I hit the cap.
Okay. I believe I saw Counselor Morris. Okay. Counselor Dunn, this type here. And Counselor Woodruff. And Counselor Booth. And Counselor, who am I missing? Townsend?
Yep.
And did I forget anybody?
No, that's here, I don't think. Heidi's not here.
Not there. Counselor Lambert's not in, I don't know.
Okay. Uh, I guess.
Of course, there are city managers here, Dan Cutter.
I was just gonna say. All right, uh, welcome, everyone, again, and, uh, we have an agenda. Maybe I'll just provide a little bit of brief history there. I have some new city councilors. Um, my good friend, um, and I still call him a good friend, even though he's a bit an older than I am. But, uh, my good friend, Don Linnley, who was county commissioner, longest-serving county commissioner in the history of the county, I believe conceived the idea of joint work sessions and started this, um, process. So, once, um, each year, the board commissioner meets once with each, uh, city council in a joint work session. So, um, we do six joint work sessions a year and one with the tribe, excuse me, Saturday here, and one with the tribe. So, that's eight joint work sessions. And, um, it's an opportunity to talk about the items of mutual interest, areas where we can work together and, uh, discuss the challenges that we face both as elected officials at county level and city. So, with that, um, the agenda that has been, uh, prepared, I think, uh, really, the ideas originate from the city council, but, uh, commissioners, uh, have added some things or do add some things occasionally. So, if there are any questions, uh, if there aren't any questions, we'll get started with the first item, which would be the sheriff's office and comment. And, uh, I don't know if there's, uh, specific areas, uh, relative to that program or other things, but, um, uh, I'll let the sheriff go or get directions from city councilors.
Sure, I can start and, uh, do a general review of the program where it currently is, and then address any questions from, uh, the council. So, good evening. I am Curtis Landers, Lincoln County Sheriff, uh, councilors, mayor, and commissioners. Comet is our community outreach and mental health enhancement team. Uh, it was, uh, one of our partnership with the behavioral health. We started last, uh, March of twenty twenty, obviously, right during COVID. It was a difficult time to start a program, but we saw the value in it and wanted to see the program, um, move forward. So, we, uh, we approved it, we decided to move the program forward, but we have been planning for a few months, evidently, to get it started. What it does is it teams up a deputy and a mental health counselor, uh, together to go out in the field and, uh, basically address behavioral health needs, uh, individuals in the community. Uh, as one of those that, um, because of how the funding came through, the county behavioral health, we do not just in the incorporated areas of the cities that law enforcement report, we the city's chairman of the whole area of the city of the county. Um, and, uh, it's not, you may have heard of crisis intervention teams and, uh, more agencies have those where they respond to individual skin of crisis at the time. Um, while I'd love to have that type of program, a new, which is one team that would be very difficult to cover enough hours across the day to really make that work. So, what the, the team came up with is, uh, a program to where we would really try to reduce the number of crises happening to begin with. And really upstream of anybody that's, uh, possibly going into crisis, uh, these individuals are usually ones that are, are, are highly, high, um, users of the criminal justice system, high users of emergency apartments, uh, other behavioral health needs, and we really want to direct them services ahead of time. Kind of the concept is, is that, uh, they go out in the areas, proactively looking for, uh, potential clients that, um, that have been identified by law enforcement and really directing the services. They interviewed a number of reports and made something, uh, some, an officer would respond to a situation, not really requiring attention, but certain, uh, things that are there that are in the report that possibly downstream could resolve a crisis happening. So, the whole idea is really divert crises from how we begin with. Um, so that's how we came up with this team, not necessarily a crisis intervention program. So, over the last year, which, um, actually the statistics for twenty twenty, which again, the program started in March, uh, through December, um, they were actually, he was able to, uh, work with a hundred and forty-six individuals who they directed to services within the county. Uh, I think, uh, a lot of these services were new clients enrolled with primary care providers, uh, new clients enrolled in mental health that never been in there before, new clients, um, assisted in detox and homeless services, um, and, and also worked with a number of individuals that were already in the system. So, they, they really saw a lot of great success early. Um, there were a lot of comments from law enforcement that, uh, saw the value of the program, that I think a couple of comments that I put down is that, uh, probably kept this people becoming very dangerous, possibly heavily encountered, which is exactly what we want the program to do, really avoid that crisis from happening. Uh, that's the good news. The bad news is, is since about January this year, the program's been on pause. Um, the mental health counselor that was assigned to the program, uh, got out on maternity leave during that time, and, um, she never really returned. She actually took position with another agency in the county, and the behavioral health has been unable to, to stack that back up again. They are also, uh, having a lot of vacancies and there's their overall crisis response team, uh, that they have that, that they actually had to reduce numbers, and so they are prioritized, getting individuals up to speed on that before really putting the program back in place. We try to keep the program going, just the deputy obviously doesn't work with that, uh, because we have nobody to really help with services or actually that direct need that counselor does out in the field, which is just, uh, invaluable, as you can imagine. So, it's a put on pause. Um, we're, I was actually hoping to kind of set a goal of two firsts to, to get that program back going again. Uh, unfortunately, that's not, uh, working at the time because mental health is still looking to identify. But there, I've seen progress in their hiring. Um, I've come heard HHS hired a new director recently, and I look forward to meeting him and discussing how we can make this, uh, maybe a little higher up priority list. Uh, we also are looking at the funding opportunities to maybe enhance that team to get more than, than one, uh, team out there because we see the need and the team is really identifying that they could use more help with that program. So, with that, I'll address any questions I can make.
Questions from the group? Wave, raise your hand. Um, I look for great microphones. I see, uh, Counselor Wunderer.
Um, I was just wondering, before it went on pause, um, was there work with some of the officials in South County that fit in the category of, uh, those that would benefit from these services?
I, I'm assuming so. I, I don't know of the direct, um, correlation in areas that they were, were doing services. I also know, um, speaking with, uh, with Mr. Cutter, that there are a number of individuals that were requiring some assistance specifically in Walport, uh, through our contract with the city. Uh, so I, I would have to assume that they were, but I didn't look at the statistics to identify actual individuals and, and obviously we try to keep some of the names out of providing public statistics on this with, uh, hip concerns and other things too. But I can only imagine that, so I see Lieutenant Shanks, who I didn't, and I don't know, maybe he has a little more details to provide specifically, uh, those individuals in South County were assisted by the team.
Lieutenant Shanks?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, uh, Sheriff Hans, uh, Adam Shanks, and then straight lieutenant. I am aware of, uh, I can definitely confirm some individuals in, in South County have received these services. Um, I know of, uh, some specific cases that we have, uh, addressed and roundtabled at multiple different, uh, platform meetings that we have related to mental behavioral health, uh, help clients, uh, how they, uh, interact with law enforcement and our behavioral health services. So, I, I can confirm, yes, there have been, uh, multiple clients in the South County area, Walport included, that have received the services.
And just ahead of, you know, talking with Deputy Hans, I know that, uh, he's working closely on a number of, of issues in, in the city, um, that he's assigned to with, with the, the contract. And I know specifically, he was working very closely with the, with the Comet team. Um, so I think that that's why I was, uh, assuming that there were individuals that were assisting this program.
What level of certification does the Comet, uh, mental health team member have to have?
Lieutenant Shanks, do you remember the exact, uh, the initials that are behind the, the name? And it's one of the things, actually, to, to have such counseling to speak to. Um, we're actually, since the contract person had left, we're actually working with behavioral health to determine exactly what the mental requirement is for the program, um, because obviously looking for someone to fill that role. Uh, we want to look and determine exactly what it can be with mental so that we can address that hiring needs too, as we move forward with it. Um, it's my understanding, Lieutenant Shanks, that the previous person actually exceeded the minimum standards, but I also know that he does something on a top with the director, uh, something that they, they have been funding for this program, and I just want to make sure that specifically, uh, whatever's outlined in that grant opportunity that they have to receive the funding from, that it meets that, that standard for them.
Yeah, and, and I apologize, I can't confirm the exact credentials, but I can tell you that the, uh, connection that was working with our Comet team, uh, have, have some fairly high credentials that, uh, quite, quite likely exceeded what we would need, uh, when we evaluate building this program out further. Uh, she's, uh, I, I really wish I could provide that information, but, uh, it, it's, it's well beyond a basic level that, uh, we would need for connecting clients directly with services. So, um, she, she could do, uh, evaluations, assessments out in the field and connect people and actually provide treatment as well.
Other questions or comments?
If you're interested, Counselor, Counselor, I can get that information and I give you a little time, I'll get back to you, if you like.
Yes, I'd like to know that. That would be great. Thank you.
We'll do that, yes.
I might add here that, uh, ordinarily, I would have asked, uh, the new Health and Human Services Director, Jane Romero, to at least be present for introductions, but she's on a previously scheduled vacation, and, uh, she'll be actually returning, I think, Thursday of this week, so. But I know that, uh, I'm sure she'll be working with, uh, Sheriff Landers on this situation, once many others. Any other questions or comments on the Comet or the, uh, questions of the sheriff's office? Counselor Webber?
I, uh, just, uh, wanted to ask about, we did relocate the deputies' offices, uh, from the back of the old city hall building to the front, and I wonder how that was working out for the deputies, from your point of view?
Uh, I've heard it's working very well. Um, I think that, uh, obviously, the, the move to the office where they're in gave them a little more room and a little more accessibility to the public. Um, they seem to like the, the partnership with the other public safety personnel in that, uh, that building. Um, so I think from our perspective, it's working very well. I think, uh, one thing that's missed is just the little more interaction that we were getting with the city, uh, employees. But I know that the other works with Deputy Hans very well, and I think that connection is still there when there's a need. Um, so I think the only thing that's missed is the door's not open, so public needs something. It's a little more challenging for the public to get to that deputy right in there, but I've heard it's working, working well. I'm not asking that.
Also, um, I, the city's been, um, talking to Dole about, uh, some ways of incentivizing or helping, partnering to help, um, take care of properties that, you know, are in need of cleanup. You know, I, I know the county has those issues too, just driving from Walport to Yohots, I, I see those. And I think also the haulers and the, uh, solid waste district manager are having that discussion too. So, anything, um, that you guys can do to help, uh, move that along? I know the city's willing to participate even in the cost of it, but it's just, it's just a problem getting people that, you know, maybe they don't have trash service at all, and then they don't have the means of taking a lot of stuff to the dump. But there it is in the middle of neighborhoods, so it's just an ongoing problem. And any ideas or help would be great to hear about.
And I know that, um, Jesse Hess, a previous code enforcement officer, has recently left. He went back to family and, you know, with Colorado. Um, one of the things he addressed before he left and, uh, kind of left us a little synopsis of what, uh, the code enforcement program, how it was doing. He really was the one that established him and, uh, got started. Um, he did mention that, you know, funding for cleanup is, is, would be very important because a lot of times, he's addressing the problem, it, it just gets to that stalemate to where they want to do something, they just don't have the means. And, uh, you know, obviously the main goals to get these properties cleaned up. Um, and, you know, balancing that with, uh, people that do have the means and just want to take work too. So, I think there's really a, uh, but I think with the code enforcement and working with individuals to do that, I think they can identify people that probably just don't have the means and other ones that are looking for government to step in and actually take the cleanup. So, I think there's a balance there that we'll address when we get a enforcement person hired so that we can, uh, can address those, uh, those needs and get that going and what the commissioners on that type of, of funding to see how we can do that.
So, at this point, you're down to one, code enforcement again?
We are, yes. And to balance those short-term rentals and code enforcement, you're down to one.
Commissioner Jacobson, I think, you had a comment?
I did. I, I was gonna say almost exactly what Sheriff Landers just said, um, which is deputy has, um, left. You know, and, uh, you know, it was clear that we need to, um, rethink or reevaluate or figure out a way to have some kind of fund for people that just don't have the funds to do that. Maybe they're compliant in nature, but, um, don't have the dollars. So, I think we do need to start having some conversations on how we overcome that barrier. And I agree with, um, Sheriff Landers that, that there's difference between not having means and not wanting to do it. And so, uh, short and through that, it's gonna be something we need to do, but, um, I think it's time for those conversations, and I think happy to have them maybe have consistency with our cities as well in doing that.
Yeah, I would, I would add that, uh, yeah, some financial support from the cities would be much appreciated. And I also remember, I'm not sure if it was two or three years ago, that our budget, uh, didn't have any funding for code enforcement officers. Uh, sheriff may have more specific dates than I do, but, um, uh, I think in the last couple, three years, we've been able to add to at least FTEs for that activity and, um, committed to filling the vacancy that we currently have.
Yeah, it was, uh, I think it was Commissioner Thompson initially approached me about it. I know it's been interesting and, uh, you know, basically with his proposal. And when working with the sheriff's office, uh, budget can be approved. The first one, second one came to us with, uh, short-term rental funding and licensing fees and that kind of that. Um, that's how we were able to, and the second one, that was primarily for short-term rental and, uh, you know, the code enforcement that goes along with that. So, it was nice coming to them though, because obviously then, um, they can work together on projects. If somebody's gone, it's just, something just doesn't sit idle for, for, whenever someone's in that. You can imagine with one person that if you must take a week or two off, then things just kind of stack up. Everybody knows what's going on, so it's nice to have, too, to have that, that, uh, that just that balance to keep things moving on in the process.
Wasn't there also, you can't imagine, I say, wasn't there also, uh, the effort to schedule one of those, uh, enforcement officers on weekends or evenings when there seemed to be a higher level of, um, issues with, uh, short-term rentals?
Yeah, James looks, looks, looks weekends, so, um, he's the ones who are doing that. He might have just been back it up, find out if he's just been back with Jessica and Don, but, uh, he was working weekends again, just like you mentioned, commissioners will account the short-term rental, uh, situation, so primarily it's a level of weekends with five points.
Yeah, before I go back to Counselor, uh, I think Lieutenant Shanks was going to offer a comment, or go ahead?
Thank you, Commissioner. I'm Counselor Councilman, uh, just to follow up, uh, she was in LPC, I believe that's licensed professional counselor. She has other credentials as well, but I think that's probably the one that you were referring to.
Thank you. Counselor Webber?
I was just gonna say that I know the city has reached out to the county a couple different times about code enforcement because, you know, we, we keep trying to handle it internally with staff, this staff person or that staff person doing it. It's just, it's, it's a hassle for sure, and I, it's just like, I'm sure it's a hassle for the county, but if somehow we could, you know, share or do something, um, um, to get a more consistent path, um, happening and also be able to stay on top of the ones that need that kind of attention, that would be great. But I know now that you're down to one, so you're not ready for that yet, so we'll keep asking, probing.
Well, would it be appropriate to have the sheriff or Lieutenant Shanks, uh, work with their city manager as far as some funding from the city?
Um, yes, absolutely.
Sure.
Yeah, we have that problem, you know, our city limits, it is, uh, very limited versus what, you know, people think is, uh, thick as is Walport. You know, we're very expansive, but the city Walport is as large as people think it is, so that's a problem.
Again, well, sorry to interrupt you, Mayor, uh, you know, and, you know, I know Mr. Cutter and I talked, and basically, Magger, we talked about this, um, because, you know, the people that are committing these type of violations and especially the ones that are moving things around like family vehicles and those type of things, uh, they don't see the boundaries of the city through the county, they just find a place. And I remember one specific case that happened, uh, several months ago, where it was a bend in the county, we were addressing it, and then they hauled it into the city, and they had to address it in there. So, um, you know, it's just a situation like that, to having that person that's working both, we can keep up on that really as well. You know, having a contract, uh, obviously, we can, and we talked about that with Mr. Cutter too, if, if there are big violations, we'll definitely work whatever we can, uh, especially since we have a contract to address your city code and, uh, whatever violations that is. It's, but, you know, there, it's just where we mark, where we mark prioritize our services do. And, you know, it makes sense that it's been great when we've had our code enforcement to be able to do that. Um, you know, a lot of these places have criminal elements sometimes to them. There, you know, there's still aspects where, where a lot of times they draw attention and help and the other types of criminal activity going on, so that code enforcement really helps to address those needs too. Just, uh, a little building within the community and that's not just the city, county, it's everywhere.
All right. Anything else, uh, for the sheriff? We've got about a half an hour left. If there are no more questions for the sheriff or Lieutenant Shanks, uh, we can move on to the next agenda item, which would be, uh, Public Works, and, uh, we have Derek Canyon with us. Uh, welcome. And, um, portions of press line drive. Lori, you want to offer some comments, and then, uh, we'll see what the councilors have?
Yeah, um, good evening. I'm Mike Canyon, uh, Public Works Director for Lincoln County. And, um, I have, over the last probably six years, have, have had multiple conversations with multiple people about various things on press line. And so, um, I guess what I'll do is I'll mention kind of each topic, and then if somebody has a question or a comment, or just wants to fill in, we can go from there. Um, I know that the city Walport received, um, a Safe Routes to School grant for sidewalk, uh, building. And I know I, I talked with, uh, Dan quite a bit about that. Um, we had some issues with, um, abandoned vehicles along the stretch press line, and I believe that, uh, the deputy down there actually kind of took care of that problem. I haven't heard anything. Um, I know there was some talk about trying to post no parking. Um, and we didn't actually get, I didn't have to get that far because that was, that problem was taken care of. Um, I don't know if there is additional parking issues down there on that stretch. Um, in order to get that posted no parking, it takes a, a board order so that it can, that it can be enforced. Um, there's a process, it's not a huge process that, except I haven't heard anything recently. Um, a few years ago, Council Delmont and I had a fairly long conversation with, uh, Jerry Kemp and Scott Andry about the possibility of, um, of sewer line project going down press line, basically towards your industrial park. And at the same time, we were talking about the possibility of jurisdictional transfer, and there was some offers and some camera offers and some good ideas played out there. Um, but I know that, you know, everything takes time. Uh, so, uh, I'm hoping that I hear an, an interesting point there someplace.
Questions from the city?
Dan Cutter, do you want to comment on his last point?
Yes, uh, thank you, Counselor. Uh, I, I think the city at this point is very excited about the possibility of building, uh, some fairly long sidewalks along, along, uh, press line, and, uh, that's going to tear up the road a little bit. And so I think we're really, uh, hoping that we can partner now with the county to do the, to do a kind of, uh, at the end of the project, do a cleanup and turnover to the city, uh, which usually involves repairing and doing some base work and some other work, uh, that will allow us to, uh, realize some savings on the grant, which allows us to both extend the sidewalk and, uh, potentially, uh, actually include some of the sewer line in part of that project to get down to the industrial park, which would be a tremendous, but not only for the city, but also the county, as it's one of the most underutilized, uh, uh, industrial spaces, uh, in Lincoln County right now, uh, with tremendous availability, but the black sewer really holding it back. So, I, I think there's a lot of discussions yet to, to take place in regards to that, but, uh, I think that's what we're really looking forward to.
Yeah, we act, we actually talked about that multiple times. Um, just as kind of, well, i- in one circumstance, it was kind of like just a, a trade deal. And in, uh, in the sidewalk circumstance, I know that it was going to be used basically as match and a few other things. And so, um, I'm on board for trying to work something out there. Um, we have done some jurisdictional transfers recently. Um, unfortunately, they seem to take decades. Um, I, I still, I still have quite a while here at Lincoln County, so maybe, we could get that one worked out. Um, but yeah, anytime you want to sit down at the table, give me a call, um, I think that's very doable. Um, I think that, uh, I was working together there, uh, would help out both sides. It's a, it's an attractive stretch of road. It's an attractive stretch of road that we can do some pretty good things with to help out the city of Walport. And also, you know, the road department's budget, it is stable, but it doesn't seem to ever be increasing. And anytime that we can try to get rid of, actually get rid of, transfer, transfer a stretch of road. I'm more than willing to fill this. And it always, you know, it costs a certain amount, make a deal, and I fully understand that. But when you're looking at 20, 30 years, 40 years down the road, it doesn't make sense to try to get some of these fringe roads. Like Crestline is mostly within the city of Walport. And I think that there's a lot of possible development out there, so it's gonna be even become more so in the Walport area. And it allows the jurisdictional transfer, then allows the city of Walport to do what the city of Walport wants to do with their city streets. Anytime you have a county road, again, city limits, you have to overlap in jurisdictions that always seem to make things a little bit complex. And so anything that we can do is straighten that out, decrease even a mile or two decrease in our, you know, in our inventory that's looking at from 330 miles down to 328, but that's moving in the right direction for sure. So I'm also trying to catch up from when we got down seven, almost eight miles on this highway plane. So we're trying to get that back up. But yeah, anytime you even want to sit down and talk to me or the law, if you want to meet on site, you can call, send me an email. Like I said, I think we've actually at some point in time discussed most of this at least two or three times. And so as I do, it's just something that, you know what direction you want to head, and I mean, I don't know, we'll get started.
That sounds pretty reasonable.
Yes, I appreciate the cooperation. I think we could work something out. That sounds great.
If I go back a few years, I think I remember a conversation with then-Mayor Woodruff about the speed limits on Crestline. And got the Director Kenyon involved in that. And so it's been a subject of conversation between the two of us for more than a year or two. Anything else on Crestline? Anything else, Public Works for Director Kenyon? All right, we'll move on to drought and shared water resources. This unfortunately is a topic of conversation much earlier in the year than normal. And I know Commissioner Jacobson has been heavily involved in water and drought activities. So I'll let her offer some comments and happy to hear from the counselors.
Thanks, Mr. Ha. I'm not entirely sure what you guys wanted to talk about in regards to this. I had had some communication with Mr. Cutter, so if everyone's agreeable, I will just kind of give an update from our drought committee and some of the stuff we actually discussed today in that drought meeting at one. And we can discuss and have questions from there. So we do have an informal drought group that meets usually starting, usually starting in late June, although starting in late May this year. And usually meeting every two weeks and meeting every week this year. That just gives you some indication about what we're dealing with. This is a group that represents forests and wildlands, as well as agricultural state agencies, Fish and Wildlife partners, and others. And I'm just gonna review a few of the updates we got from day, from the day. The purpose of the group is really to help inform Lincoln County and the Board of Commissioners if and when it's time to declare a drought. I think the year before he became a commissioner, the county needed to declare a drought. And it was something that in ways been 33 years he had never done previously. And it got it done, but it was a little complicated. It took a little bit of time. And so this group I pulled together to basically try to get ahead of things. And so here's the summary that was provided at the meeting today by partners. Egg summary, periods of showering weather and improved agricultural soil moisture in the shallow root zone. But full soil moisture is still well below seasonal normals. Local forage yields are depressed with growth at about 50% of normal. Rager livestock auction yards are known to be exceptionally dry pastures in our region and subsequent negative impacts on prices for feeder cattle and cow calf market segments. And so organ producers are discussing liquidating beef and dairy herds from lack of water slash forage. Local river hydrology remains in historical lows. Organ Department Forestry is maintaining industrial fire precaution level zero, fire season not in effect in Lincoln County. USDA, US Fish and Wildlife Service indicating low fire danger in St. Shullet National Forest. And Lincoln County Fire Department is strictly backed there, according to June 1, about four weeks earlier than normal. The USDA drought monitor estimates our area D1, moderate drought, D2, severe drought. On an X-D4 scale, severe drought estimated in the southern margins of our county where you are at. Two additional eastern Oregon counties have requested drought declarations. Eight remain under government declared droughts in years in Douglas County. Move on, Lori, a little piece here. The Selex River is discharging at about 32% of average. The Selex is forecast to approach record daily minimums in the next 10 days. The Alsey River is discharging about 30% of average. The Alsey is in historical daily minimums for some weeks now. Seasonal hydrological averages tend down from now until September. So, and that's kind of a summary, but long story short is we are definitely headed for, I don't know if they are, we in drought conditions. The recommendation from the group today was to meet again next week and try to call on all of our local water purveyors, including cities and smaller water purveyors and, you know, small water districts. To basically, you know, get them ready, have them dust off their retailment plans and be ready to implement. And if things continue the way they are, which provisions say they likely will, we will likely need to declare a drought sometime in the next two to three weeks. So that's kind of where we're at in terms of the county declaring a drought and declaration. We are, at least from an administrative perspective, with having that declaration, you know, ready to go. So we can do that when we need to. But like I said, are kind of trying to get our water purveyors on board so that they're ready to go as well. So with that, I'm kind of happy to take questions.
Mayor, do you have a question, or are you just adjusting your camera?
My camera, I do have a question, actually. The city can get involved with the county in prioritizing resources to facilitate the interties between different regions? And is it, is it all the water districts or is the county involved?
You asked me a little bit involved on water plans, or?
Uh, yeah, the intertie between the different regions. Yes, 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 I'm sorry.
So the county is not a, go ahead, Wayne, you'll explain it there.
Yeah, I was gonna say, Wayne, Council Belmont.
Wayne Belmont County Council. These discussions have been going on for a number of years. At the Midcoast Water Partnership, I think, and I know that Walport is a member of that group, has been talking about this very issue of interties between various systems here, looking at water resources and ways we can share not just the water supply, but water distribution systems here. And they have been engaged in that particular activity for several years and continue to seek some funding to get grants to the planning and discussions and take some actions related to that. The county has a kind of unique situation here because we are not a purveyor of water per se. So we have been involved with the Midcoast Water Partnership as a facilitator, as encouraging regional solutions to these kinds of issues. But it's a little bit different for us because we aren't, again, a purveyor of water. So I think that, you know, those kinds of discussions need to keep going. Unfortunately, the city of Newport was a leader in that particular process and through their Public Works Director, who just recently left. And is in private practice now. And I'm not really sure what they're doing to continue on the discussions. But that really has been sort of the framework to really see if we can provide some solutions to the interties. And again, look at the regional water supply. I know the Rocky Creek discussion of a regional water supply was part of that particular overall planning effort. The city of Newport, of course, is continuing to discuss the potential construction of new dams on its own supply and actually providing some additional resources there. And thankfully, it all ties back into the drought issues because we're gonna see some of these priority rights this year on rivers like the Alsey and Selex being invoked and some of the junior whites water usage is gonna be regulated, not the use of that. So that's an ongoing issue that we look at in terms of aquatic life, recreational and fish and bottle life lows that are protected by some of these rights. So that's all part of the equation and all part of the discussion.
Okay, thank you, sir.
I would just add too that there is some efforts, so much of it involved in potentially trying to resurrect the Rocky Creek plan and see what parts of that plan might still be viable. So there is some effort on trying to, we look, there's a lot of work on that then previously, and that just sort of died. And so there is some efforts on trying to resurrect that discussion.
Was the, was the city of Newport heavily involved in that, Commissioner?
Did you have Newport, Lincoln County, and the city of Lincoln City were all very much involved in that? And it was way before my time. It's kind of one of those things where you say, why did the discussion stop? And one will say, well, because the city of Lincoln City stopped it. But if you ask Lincoln City, they'll say, well, because the city of course stopped it. So I'm not sure why exactly. But it is sort of, like I said, there is an opportunity to at least bring that back up and look at it.
Counselor Woodruff, you had your hand up, microphone screen.
Yes, I also was gonna say that I attended those meetings on the Rocky Creek Plan. And I'm sure we have documents come up on our city hall shelves somewhere for all that planning that went into it. And it was a considerable amount. I think in the end, it seems to always come down with sharing and losing control. But I had a question about the drought committee. Is that just a county committee? Or are the cities represented on that as well?
So mostly we focus on, like I said, state agencies, so water resources, Fish and Wildlife, Organ Department Forestry, and then also people that represent the agricultural community and forest owners. There's no reason why a city couldn't be on it, especially the city water purveyors. Like I said, we're trying to pull together a group of purveyors next week to kind of talk about this. I use the committee lightly because we have a host of people that are on the invite. We meet every week at the same time, and whoever can kind of make it, makes it. We just kind of take feedback and information that is ultimately the Board of Commissioners that has to make a decision and vote on a drought declaration. So I guess a city or a water purveyor would be welcome to join. Mostly it's data that those agencies bring in and then we discuss how many deciding, is it time yet?
So on the declaration, is that something that the county does that covers the whole county or just the county area? In other words, including the cities or just?
Council Belmont, it's the whole county. That's your question, man. It's the whole county.
Okay.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it's a little interesting though, as Wayne was saying previously, because it is the whole county. But we, the county, are not a water purveyor. So now it kind of falls on the water purveyors to start doing retailment plans and those kinds of things, which is why we're kind of trying to pull them in, have a Florida potentially to declare.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments on drought or water? Those kind of opposite ends of the spectrum.
This is Wayne. Yeah, just a quick question. From the city's perspective, Dan, are you the best person that we should bring in when we're trying to convene this group of water purveyors here? Or would you bring along a, you know, one of your city staff that was talking about that, your campaign on the plans, what your supply looks like, issues you have with water at this point? I'm not sure who the contact person is.
It'd be myself and Scott Andrea, Public Works Director.
Right. Okay, great. We'll make sure that you're included in the discussions this week or next week.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
All right. If there's nothing more on this topic, we'll move to Commissioner and Counselor's discussion on accomplishments and challenges. And Mr. Mayor, I'll let you and your counselors go first. And Commissioner Jacobson tonight can chime in and add to the conversation as we go on.
Well, we feel like we're accomplishing a lot. Getting our open space project up and running, getting the engineering report going so we can start our public park for citizenry. And hopefully we'll soon have some picnic benches and a disco going. For both for our local folks and for our out-of-towners, tourists to use for their dining pleasure and our restaurants, benefit, our local restaurants to benefit from. We've got, our Heritage Museum has moved into the interpretive center, which we now are the stage of our work. It's gonna be opening, we're tentatively planning July 1st with COVID restrictions in place. So we're excited about that. And it should have a lot more foot traffic since it'll be on the one on one now. And the history of Walport will be available to more people. And hopefully, we're gonna try to get more of it online so people can actually research it from all over the country, hopefully. And we'll find a use for the old Heritage Museum. It's gonna be out for art pieces. So hopefully we can find a use for the community for that building. And let's see, what else are we gonna do, folks? We've got some really good things going, and then we have some problems. We have our, our water system, we have some. Okay, we have our, it was briefly mentioned by the Public Works gentleman. Oh, goodness. My phone doesn't like to sit in this direction.
That's a good backseat.
It's, let's see, we have the Safe Routes to Schools grant that we received, which is gonna slightly provide a route for children to school, but they will only have to crap across Crestline a minimal number of times. And we'll have a place to bike safely and to walk safely. And I'm especially glad for that. They won't be on the streets at all. But that's a big plus. And our biggest problems are, though, our infrastructure relating to the water tank and to the, to the treatment facility, which are gonna need upgrading to meet DQ and and other federal regulations. So that's gonna be our biggest worry in the coming years. And we're trying to make funding for that available. It's gonna, and we estimate it'll be about 20 million in the next five years. So we're gonna have to come up with raises, rates and loans and grants. So things will need to come up.
Is there some art money available for that, do you think?
Yeah, there's some, there's some, but it's not gonna cover, you know.
I was thinking infrastructure.
Yeah. It's, the problem is that there are all these infrastructures that are not including water projects, so. water projects, so, you know, a lot of the legislation, which is making it even more difficult for all of us small cities. Because we are, all these projects were built around the same time, so they're all starting to fail around the same time, so. And all the regulations are starting to hit all of the small cities at the same time. So it's going to be a problem all across the state of the world, yeah. Probably all across the country, I mean, true.
I was going to say, any other comments, Mayor, or say Counselor Woodruff, enter and then I agree with Commissioner Jacobson?
Okay, that's fine.
I was just going to mention further on water, we are getting new water meters, but many of ours are decades old, and, you know, part of the emphasis of doing that is to capture what water we're actually selling and also increase the revenue, because we have a lot of water projects that need to happen, so that revenue is vital. Also, we did, within the suit of, we had a company that was to recode our, one of our water tanks, and they did a faulty job, so that took a couple of years of legal battle in order to get some money back, but we did, so that also will be helpful. But also another thing is Wave has come to town to Walport, bringing broadband to our citizens, and actually, we have converted, and it's cheaper than what we were paying for much less speed before. Not only that, now it's in competition, Peak has also joined, so we have two purveyors now of broadband, which is great for all our families. Not only did we get the interpretive center, but the Isaac Walton Lee and the Andy Kendall family had properties along that slough, and they have donated that land to the city to their hands, our, our parks and our trails, so we're very thankful to that. Eventually, that will make possible a trail from lower Walport up through Crestline Park, and then across and down to this slow trail, so there'll be a total, you know, up and down trail circle that will be a very, very beautiful trail. So that's another good stuff happening here.
Other comments for, well, Commissioner Jacobson?
Yeah, I was just going to add to the, I'll switch my camera here, accomplishments and challenges. According to zip code data, the city of Walport is about at fifty-nine point five percent of your illegal population is vaccinated, so that is certainly an accomplishment. So congrats on that, and you know, challenges is getting the rest of everybody that's eligible to get vaccinated, and just a reminder that, you know, we're really kind of decommissioning those mass vaccination efforts we had had, I actually spent a couple of evenings in Walport at the mass clinic down there. You know, I'm really trying to get out and do vaccinations where people are at, but we can reduce barriers like transportation, we also have some incentive money from, from the state, so we are looking for ideas. So please reach out to us or Public Health if you have an event, you already know about Beachcomber Days, but an event or an opportunity or, you know, a location that might be good for the mobile clinic to come down, we're really working on trying to reach people where they're at and get those rates up.
Yeah, I was going to contact you about Beachcomber Days, I'm vice president, so.
Counselor Woodruff?
Also, we have our Wednesday market every week at the community outdoors at the community center. I don't know if that would be a good place to, to reach the numbers of people that you would like to reach, but it is something that's there every week and people do come and go, so that's a possibility. I know you were doing it at the community center, but I think that's been discontinued probably because the numbers were down, is that correct?
Yeah, numbers were down, so we just, you know, weren't having that people come in that just a big, a big-ish amount like that, so like I said, trying to focus on more kind of smaller opportunities and reaching those people that, you know, may not have come to a mass clinic or whatever, so. I will send off the Wednesday farmers market idea to our Public Health Director.
We heard about the efforts to reach those individuals that are harder to get to and look through some mobile clinics, some other smaller community activities were identified, and so I think Beachcombers may be a way off, but certainly the Wednesday event would seem to be a good possible opportunity to get more shots in arms, which is what it's all about.
Yeah, and they're also working on trying to reach the, you know, neighboring incorporated communities like Tidewater, but really can't have, you know, any direct vaccination efforts that are, so trying to reach those small little community places as well.
Got a couple, three minutes left, other comments? Well, I'll offer a couple. I, I think the response to the RFP that was led by three mayors, and I, I'm not sure that any of them are still mayors, but it was to fund part-time positions at Chamber of Commerce in Toledo, Equovale, and Walport. Those monies are coming from the transient room tax, and the initial commitment was for a three-year funding of that, those positions. And at this point, I'm comfortable in saying that I, I think the transient room tax revenues continue to be strong, actually stronger than we might have expected during COVID. So without making any commitments, I think that there will be funding available to continue that program beyond the three-year term. And frankly, from my opinion, it's, it's been very successful. I think that it's enabled the chambers to, to be more active, we're there as executive directors, and I think it's, it's been good for the cities and the county, so I see that continuing, and I think that's certainly a success that Walport and at the time Mayor Woodruff deserve some recognition for. The last comment I'll make is trails were mentioned, I am the convener of the Midcoast Oregon Coast Trail Project, and that project is really trying to close the missing connections, we never like to call them gaps, but the missing connections as far as the Oregon Coast Trail, and I remember, I go back, gosh, probably ten years, there was some Connect Oregon money for a trail around the seawall down at the South Garden, one on one there across the Alsea Bridge. And well, that money is no longer there, I know that there have been discussions about some kind of a separation between traffic and the seawall that would facilitate the trail, which is both pedestrian and bicycle use, but that discussion is continuing as far as one of the connection groups that is working to really complete the trail that ultimately will go from the Columbia River to the California border. And we have the part of the midsection, which really goes from Cascade Hills to Florence. We have some of the most, longest stretches of missing trails, so the challenge around the seawall in Walport is a bit formidable, but there are at least some discussions on how that might be resolved. So a couple of projects that directly affect the Walport area, where we've seen some good success.
Thank you for mentioning those, and fourth county's involved in here now, we really appreciate it.
Well, that's a team effort. Somebody came up with an idea and seemed to make a lot of sense, and somebody got some money, so that's a, it's a good part of the trail. Any, any last comments or word six thirty-one? Yeah, I think it's good conversation, and there's some things we can follow up on and opportunities to continue to work together.
No, we just appreciate the time, and we appreciate your cooperation, and we enjoy working with you guys.
I've always said, you know, a little collaboration, cooperation, and coordination, we can get a lot done, so.
Yes, that's true.
Feeling is mutual, Mayor.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Appreciate your time, and with that, if there are no further comments, I wish everybody a good evening.
You too.
Thank you all. Good night now.
This conference is no longer being recorded.